Okay, thanks for coming. We'll start the meeting with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Dan, anything to add or change? Dwayne?
I have nothing.
Ryan?
No.
Okay, we've got two adds here. Under H3, new business, we're gonna have a sewer bill dispute and the correspondence is on the table in front of you. And then K2, we're adding, under personnel, Amy Johnson's resignation.
And then a closed session for the other thing.
And then a closed session under the attorney's report for a labor issue. With that, I entertain a motion to approve. The agenda has changed.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. On the consent agenda, any questions for administration on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Thanks, Dwayne. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Mayor's report. The only thing I have is just to thank you, the city staff, for how the park and the town looked for the festival. We had a pretty good turnout, a lot of people there. And then to single out Mr. Burke from the Public Works Department for participating and winning the belly flop contest. So, I saw him a couple of days later at Hidden Pines when he was eating and he showed me some of his discolored bruising that comes with the territory of the belly flop. So, but he did good and he won, so he was pretty happy. Asked if there was anything the city did for any kind of incentives for that. And I said, "Good job." "Thanks for participating." But no, it went well. The festival went well. A lot of kids enjoyed it, so it was a good time. Bruises of honor, exactly. And with that, we'll go to the public hearing, the annexation of the land owned by Jeremy Bigelow on the south side of the Shutey property.
Well, including your packet, you have a couple of items. There's the description of the property. It's a parcel that's entirely encircled by the city limits at the time being. You've got Mr. Shutey's property to the north and you've got the park kind of to the south there. Part of the catalyst for this was the fact that they would like to change the road configuration. Planning and zoning members would be very familiar with the fact that DOT is requiring Mr. Shutey to have his road a little bit farther to the north. So, originally, I think, when they had this parcel designed the way it was, they were anticipating that that skinny piece would be part of a road entrance, but Minda is gonna force it to the north. So, in order to make things fit, Mr. Shutey and Mr. Bigelow have kind of worked this out. So, I'm not sure if they have a...I know they're talking about some sort of residential, potentially residential development, but whether it be a higher density or lower density, I'm not sure that that's...it hasn't been decided yet.
Right now, it's just the annexation and they've both agreed in that we're orderly with Manville Township.
That's right. And Manville Township, I met with their board two weeks ago, beginning of August. So, it's three weeks ago now. And had a conversation with them about it and they understood. It's not an area that, you know, they had any problems with.
All right. Any questions or comments from council before we open the public hearing? Okay, I'll open the public hearing regarding the annexation of the Bigelow property, south side of the Shutey property. If anybody has anything they'd like to say? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
All right.
So, we have a resolution to approve that annexation. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. That's all we need on that, correct?
That's right.
Excellent. Okay. All right, on to old business, G1, the budget. Everybody's had a chance to look that over. Any questions first before we get...Tim gets...has his comments, but is there any questions for Nancy directly?
No, just an additional thank you for all the effort you've put into it.
Tim, yep, you got it.
I do have a few things just to note, and I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, that the baseline numbers you have there don't incorporate a number for the potential referendum. So, that would be in excess over the operational budget that you have. So, right now, if nothing were to change at all, and I expect that it will, it would come in right about 11%. Because I think we're planning on, you know, two and a half or so percentage for that to make sure that works. And then with that, I would just let Nancy speak to anything she has. If there's any questions, there are a lot of areas where we wanna try and fine tune this. Some of the things we don't know, obviously, healthcare is a big unknown. And we have a large number that's included in the budget right now, and healthcare is a big part of our budget. Benefits and wages make up a large portion of the budget, not just for the general fund, but also for the library fund. That's, you know, a very personnel-dominated budget, so...you know, and the other big add is in public safety. You know, and that was, you know, it's just one of those things where there's a cost to adding an officer and that's what we've got budgeted in right now, is that extra officer starting. I think we're actually hoping to start them this fall, aren't we, Josh? So, that's kind of the plan, but certainly up to the council. That's something we had talked about last year. So, other than that, you know, I think Nancy, do you have anything else you wanna add or take questions?
Well, no, just generally speaking, you know, please let us know if you have any questions. The preliminary conversation will be September 14th and we've invited the community for any input for that one. Generally speaking, if you look at the levy departmental components, we have some that have increased or decreased with what looked like large numbers, but if you look at the detail, it's maybe a small dollar amount because it's not a big budget department. But I will note that planning and zoning is having a little bit of an increase. In the past, while we had a Heisenstein kegler, it was kind of a wash. We always budgeted the payroll, but we had a contract and it was kind of a wash. But with the plans to go forward, we budgeted more for Heisenstein kegler to continue to serve as our experts on some of the issues that may come up. So, that's the reason that one's a little higher. You know, example of 116% increase in playgrounds because Ronnie wants about 3,500 more in wood fiber that we need throughout. So, that just is an example of that. And then, generally speaking, the health insurance right now budgeted 20%. It contributes to about 30% of the...or, excuse me, 2% of that levy increase. And then the police personnel, along with the new cars, the new personnel with new car is about 3.7% of that increase that's looked at right now. Also, we'll be tweaking it a little more. The preliminary levy isn't until September 14th, but this...the numbers that you see here, they don't included any increases from the fire department because we hadn't had a chance to meet with them, but it increases from 8.4 to 8.65. And again, as Tim noted, it does not include anything of a levy, a debt increase for the fire hall. So, please let us know if you have any questions.
I just have one question that I noticed. It's when the police department for the repairs and maintenance, there's 10,000 additional to the budget for water. Is that a roof water leak or like a water line leak? What kind of water leak?
We think it comes from the window.
Okay, so that's a physical repair that we don't know or it's out there. Okay.
Well, and that may be an expense that we may be able to rectify this year. That way, we may not have to. We may be able to pull that.
Okay.
That's kind of our...my hope is to get the leak completed before it gets worse. And if we can do that this year, obviously, that makes more sense than waiting to budget for it for next year. But...which may mean we go a little over on our repairs and maintenance budget this year.
Right.
But I mean, as Nancy said, I mean, you know, there are those percentages and you can kind of see where it's coming from. You know, it's driven from three or four different categories. But, you know, it's kind of interesting that you mentioned that, Nancy. I hadn't even thought of it that way. 2% out of the eight is healthcare and, you know, what was it, 4% or so was the public safety added.
Yeah, 3%.
So, I mean, you've got 6% of that levy increase is just going to two things, which is...I'm really hoping the healthcare comes down. I mean, that's, you know, just something we...as soon as we get that information, we'll be sharing that with council and that'd be great if we get that number down.
And we're trying to get away from peep, correct?
Well, the issue that I...the issue that we've run into is that peep is literally the only carrier that will carry the city right now because of the use, you know, multiplier that we have. And as you know, we have some staff that have utilized the healthcare, which is why it's there, it's in the health insurance. But because of that multiplier, you know, you have very few vendors. We already have very few vendors in this area because of the Mayo dominance. You know, there's the good and bad of Mayo is that it's really good care, but it also, there's really not a lot of other options. So, you know, with peep, there's those three plans you can pick from. And, you know, based on what I've heard now, we were able to get the employee count down under 50, which means that we're eligible for the small, small city or small group plans as opposed to being stuck with the large plans, which if we would've seen a large plan, you know, we were told it would've been 40 or 50% increases. So, with the small plans, we should be, you know, hopefully a little bit more competitive, but I don't have those numbers yet, so.
We usually won't get those till what, October, November now?
You know, last year, I think it was like September 20th or something like that.
Right after we got the...
Right after we got the levy.
Right after we got the...
But thankfully, you know, based on the council's feedback last year, you know, we had raised that percentage. You know, and it actually was just about, I think, I think we had it in the preliminary levy at 10 last year and it was like 9.6 is what it was last year, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody has? I'll have more before the next one, but I've got a red line copy for you. Okay, on the cannabis.
So, you've got included some items that we've discussed already. Been in conversations with the county. Actually, today, Jim had emailed me, Jim Melquist, the county administrator, emailed me back again and had said that the county board decided to work with AMC, which is the, you know, the Association of Counties. They are actually coming up with their draft guidance and Dodge County expects to or anticipates adopting whatever AMC comes forward with. So, at this time, my recommendation is to hold pat on this until we know more about what the county's gonna do. You know, we can always go more restrictive than the county, but we can't go less than the county. So, I think that's just kind of the safe, safe way to be. I don't know. I mean, it's...I haven't had a lot of feedback from the public. So, and we haven't seen a huge upswing of new smoke shops opening yet, so, you know, in the fullness of time, who knows what will happen exactly.
Okay. Thank you. Sounds good. On the new business, number one, the GIS agreement.
This is relatively straightforward. It's something we have every year coming from...well, technically speaking, it kind of comes through Goodhue County, actually. Goodhue County hosts the GIS and their staff are very good up at Goodhue County. You know, we work with Dodge County there to do it, but Goodhue's actually the one who hosts it. But you can see there, this is the 2023 agreement and then there's a, there's a small increase in cost.
Okay. Any questions on that? Spoiler plate, so I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thanks, Dan. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Dwayne. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number two, resolution setting a public hearing on the vacation abatement for Quick Trip North. And that is in there to set the public hearing for the 14th of September at the city council meeting. So...
Move to approve this, this hearing for the 14th of September.
Perfect. Do you have a second?
Second.
Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Looking forward to that public hearing.
Is that the same day as...
The budget, as a budget.
Yep. I don't anticipate that it'll be a long public hearing, but...and we may have another public hearing, just to be aware of. We have some cleaning up of our, continuing to clean up our liquor language code for that, the new chaotic good brewing that has kind of a different designation and so Jan's working on it. She'll have that in the packet. So, we may have another public hearing on that, just in...
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, number three is the addition that we had for the disputed sewer water bill. You've got correspondence there from the taxpayer, the citizen. What it comes down to is there was a billing period where there was 92,000 gallons of water that went through the meter and they're befuddled as to what, where it went. So, what they're asking is for us to basically waive the whole thing. But our past history has been when people have these situations that are obviously out of the normal, we charge for the water because that dig goes through, but we won't charge for the sewers, what we've done in the past for some of these. So, if anybody has any comments, I'd like to hear it, but that would be my recommendation is that we stick with what our precedent's been before.
The only question I have is if they did 92 this month and then they think that it could be something with the meter, but yet they're saying the meter's fine, what happens next month if it's high?
That's a great question.
Do we look at changing out the meter?
Yes, actually, on the 22nd, the staff did go out and change the meter. And that's a good point, too, is, you know, he's asking for this at this time, between the 15th, when they generated the bill this past month, and the 22nd, when they changed out the meter, they...that meter showed another 15,000 gallons of usage. So, it's possible this would come back to council again. When they took the meter out, they looked at it, it seemed to be working properly. So, the water department didn't identify any issues with the meter. They changed it out out of abundance of caution and they're tracking it. So, each week now, they're gonna be checking that, that meter to see if that high number continues. You have those items that Mr. Hayes included in the packet there. You know, he has done the right thing. He went and got a plumber to take a look at it and I appreciate the work that he's done. I know there's some expense for him on that as well, so, you know, yeah, we absolutely... And when I talked to him on the phone, you know, the city's goal is not that he uses 92,000 gallons of water. So, you know, in this situation, it's not good for the city either. We don't want someone, a residential home, we can't support that. I mean, the pumps cannot keep up with that if, if, you know, it's just a incredible water loss and it's part of our water loss tracking. We're trying to get into that 10% number. So, so, yeah, I mean, he's very cognizant of it and, you know, I may have another one to bring to you next month if that number continues to be high. If it continues to be high, then I'm...
Then there's something else there. We just don't know what.
Are we seeing a $70,000 or 70,000 gallon inflow into the sewer?
You know, I haven't asked Dave about that. I mean, those flows are such a stent that I don't know that we'd see a huge spike typically with that, but...
I mean, 70,000 gallons is quite a bit.
Or a sub pump. If it's within under the house, is it going into the sub pump?
They're running million, million gallons a day or something like that. I don't know if they would notice it. But I can definitely ask Dave for information on that. I mean, I've got his report from last filing period.
Because he could have something underground that's broke past the meter, but if it's past the meter, usually it wouldn't be underground unless there's something...
Yeah, I mean, my, you know, when I talked to the resident on the phone, you know, he is...and you could see his bill starts spiking and starts actually spiking in the June billing. So, you know, in that month, he goes from 5,000 to 10,000. And he indicated that, you know, he had a pool that was filled. It was 6,400 gallons, so that makes sense. In July, he said that they were doing some watering. They had garden. It was a dry month, so that doesn't... And then he said they went on vacation and, you know, I don't know this, but I would anticipate that at some point there was probably a hose or something left on, because otherwise I don't see there being 92,000 gallons.
But he said he shut the water off and they went on vacation.
And I don't dispute what he's got in his letter. I mean, I'd most agree with it, but I just don't...I mean, I don't know how much you would get that high of a number, even if you had a toilet that was running or a, you know, something that was running. It seems like it would just be a huge number.
I mean, 92,000 is a lot, a lot. I know when we had our, flooded our house, when our fitting on the washer broke when we were gone and then we figured it ran for about five hours, we had 25,000 gallons that month before they could get it fixed. So, it probably ran for half a day. I mean, a lot of water can come out of that in a short period of time. But 92 just seems a high number.
Well, I know that we did have, some of the new homes in town had over 100,000 gallons of water in that July period because they were watering sod. And so, that's typically where I see that number. I mean, there's a house, two houses up from mine where it's a new house, large yard, and they, they put it in, in July, sod, when it was 95 degrees out. But, you know, so they did have like 111, but that's usually the only way we would see that kind of number. It's a new house with sod. So, so, yeah, I mean, it's, we're definitely tracking it, so, you know, we're gonna be watching. And I know from the 15th to the 22nd, there was 15,000. If they have that high number again on Monday this week, then obviously whatever they did did not fix, you know, whatever happened. So, there needs to be some additional work done on that. I mean, when you think about it, I guess, it does sound like a high number at the same time. I'm not sure we'd see a spike because you think 92,000 spread out over 30 days, 3,000 gallons of water a day, which, you know, I don't know if we'd see a spike on the sewer, but...
So, I would say that my recommendation would be we waive the sewer end of it for sure, but we'll revisit the 92,000 gallons of water after they do some readings for a couple of weeks to see what's going on. Because there might've been a...
Malfunction in the meter.
Something in the meter or something there. I mean, we could revisit that. If that sounds good.
They can do whatever they wanna do. It's perfectly fine. So, yeah, I agree with you on the sewer. I mean, based on the water department's recommendations, they do feel the meter's working properly, so they do feel the water ran through the meter. But we certainly can revisit that if it's continuing to spike, you know, in the next billing period. We'll know that, you know.
At least see the next billing period, because you had a couple of people come out with the water softener and the plumber with everything else and they couldn't find any leaks or where it ran. So, you went to a lot of work to get the people out there.
Right, because he wants it fixed, I guess.
Yeah. So, I would say for sure, let's do the water, or sorry, the sewer and revisit the water part of the bill after the next billing cycle, once they get back...
Ron having an item for you on the 14th, one way or the other.
Okay. And no late fees on his bill if he hasn't paid it in that limited...
So, we're looking at it. If you're, if we're going with the previous billing, you'd be looking at, looks like, what would that be? About $436 would be what we'd be looking at waiving from the, this previous billing. On the sewer portion.
Okay. Do you need a motion on that or is this direction?
Yes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve waiving the sewer and revisiting the water portion of the bill after the next billing cycle.
I'd make that motion.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dwayne. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thanks, Tim. And the administrator's report.
All right. Got a few things tonight and then a few things just for informational purposes there. So, obviously, we're talking about the budget. That's a...I've just got a few items in there just to highlight. For every dollar in city tax revenue in the budget in the general fund, 37 cents goes to our public safety departments and 11 cents goes towards maintaining streets. So, just so people keep in mind, that's, you know, about half the budget goes to just those two lines. There's some funding opportunities we have, just a ton of money sloshing around at the federal level, whether it's through the solar incentives and through stuff like that or it's through some of these new programs that the federal government have and we'll be taking a look at that. Planning on meeting with our Carla Nelson, who is the person who's running and one of our... She's one of the incumbent senators in our area, talk about our bonding bill request. There's some hope there might be a bonding session in November after the election now, is actually what we're being told. I don't know. If they don't meet, they miss out on a huge amount of federal funding, so I anticipate that they'll have some sort of meeting. That may be, it may be a one day, a one day, you know, session just to cover that portion and that may be what they end up doing depending on the results. Couple of park and rec things I wanted to run through. They had a very good meeting. Next month, they'll be talking about the hours of operations for the aquatic center, the fees, that sort of thing. We've had a lot of feedback, some positive and some less positive. But it's always helpful to get feedback from folks and I think that Ron's working on that to get that fired up. And one item they talked about at length was the, and anyone who was in the park last two weeks with the festival, there's a concrete planter or a limestone and past mortar planter that is deteriorated and so the park supervisor is recommending that that be removed. Park and Rec Board did talk about it and they were not able to come to a conclusion, so I'm bringing it to council just to let you know they are recommending that, he is recommending that be removed. It's deteriorated. So, just wanted you to be aware of that and I wanted to see if you had any feedback on that. As I said, if you've been through the park, you've kind of seen it.
My only feedback is that for spending the whole weekend up there and I have every year for 20 years or 15, 20 years, whatever it is, the last two festivals, we've had a lot of kids running around with loose pieces of limestone that just fall out of it and sometimes those become projectiles. Nobody's been hit yet, but, so...
Yeah, it's become a safety issue.
It's lived its useful life and it probably is time to...because wasn't there talk of putting a memorial there at one point?
Yeah, that is kind of the, the park supervisor, he would like to cite the new veterans' peace memorial or however you wanna term it in that area. It does have some nice, good space area, so he had some, some draft pictures and at that last park and rec board meeting. So, yeah, I mean, I think it may be that the park board may not be able to come to a conclusion on the planter itself, so it may be that the council has to make a decision on this because they're pretty divided on that.
Sure. And I think a lot of it might be coming down to the historic nature of the limestone compared to the wall that was there. That's which I don't think the planter is part of that.
No.
I have the original plans from when it was designed under the Works Production Act and the planter wasn't part of those plans, so that's not part of the historic part of it.
I'd be more open to an upgrade, you know, garden or something.
Well, I think that was part of the, part of the conversation, at least from Ron's perspective. You know, I think a flower planter by itself is fine. The issue is in order to, at least he feels, in order to repair that, they would just tear it apart.
Yep.
You know, and if you're gonna do that, then you'd be better off putting in a, a regular, like, concrete planter or something of that nature, just because it wouldn't be the damaged condition. So, so, I'm gonna let it go to the park board one more month and see if, if some leadership on the park board can, can bring it forward, right, Ryan?
Yeah, I was gone. I missed the last meeting, but I am definitely in favor. I, I've lived here for 30 years. Tear it, tear it down and I do like any of the memorial, but it's a budget-friendly one. It's important. They can get costly, so...
Well, so noting in your budget, there was, the last two years, they have budgeted $10,000 each year for that purpose. This year, there's $10,000 in the budget for that as well, so we'd be looking at a budget of about $30,000 if that was, what was approved by council.
They had talked about working with the Legion and some other, some other avenues to find some funding, but I think in the short term, the safety piece, taking it out is probably a good idea.
Okay. Yeah, have fun at the next meeting.
Well, I mean, it's all good conversation, but everybody wants to have a nice park.
Yep.
In consideration, too, maybe placement of it, you know, right dead center is not always ideal because it, you know, you want a large space in which to do different things in a park. So, putting it right dead center, it kind of infringes all the way around.
The park has changed a lot in the last 30 years, adding different pieces and moving things and the center of it's changed. Well, I appreciate your feedback and I will bring it back to the, to the park board for some, some more conversation. So, otherwise, yeah, I did have a, that event went off very well, had a lot of good feedback from residents. I enjoyed the white sidewalls. It was, was kind of fun. I mean, I was out there dancing it up a little bit. She, she enjoyed herself too, so it's always great. Even though it was kind of a cloudy weekend, I think everybody kind of enjoyed themselves pretty well. The other thing that I was gonna put out from that is that the fire department was very active, putting out information about the fire hall project throughout the parade route and also over the weekend. So, they're gonna continue to do that. I was able to meet with the, well, I was the speaker at the Lions on Monday night and it was a good question and answer session. I think I spoke for about 20 minutes about the different things going on in town and then I gave them some time for questions and there were a lot of questions, so they asked a lot of good questions. The Lions are very interested in all things that are going on in town, especially with Lions Park with their, with the projects there, but also the fire hall was a good topic. So, I, I've been, I told the fire chief that it might be good for him to be a speaker at the Lions meeting in one of his upcoming months before November. So, anyway, we talked a little about that THC. The other big one that I wanna highlight is this Dodge County ambulance services. A well-attended meeting on Tuesday in Dover and Dodge Center, representatives from the county, some of the county commissioners. Hayfield, it sounds like Hayfield and Dodge Center are looking at merging. They're both struggling personnel-wise, struggling financially. They're looking at different options to continue service. As I, I mentioned at our last meeting, they brought Ellers, which is a financial planning company and that's, that has set up special tax fire districts in other parts of the state. That's one option. Another option is a joint powers group. Those are kind of the more, probably, I would say, more realistic options. So, what, what we asked and what I asked them to do was to give us what their options are so I can bring those to you so that you can actually talk about them. Although, there's a lot of conversations about different things. The other thing that we heard from Ellers and, you know, the other city staff that were there indicated to Dodge Center is that it's not, you know, it's too late this year. So, you know, there isn't gonna be, you know, Ellers even told us, they said the earliest, that a lot of the stuff could get there. It would be next year, it would be next February. So, so, I mean, budget-wise this year, it should not have an increased impact on our, our budget. However, that's something to be cognizant of. You know, I know that the Wanamigos and Broda, that, that's a joint powers they have up there and what those cities do is they do per capita, where everybody says, okay, the board votes and says, here's what our per capita is. So, based on our residents, you pay $10 per resident or something like that. And the cities pay into it. That's kind of how their group works. The positive to a special taxing district is that it would cover also the townships. What you end up having is a lot of times the townships opt out of paying in. However, the state requires the ambulance district to still serve those townships. So, so, pluses and minuses, but when they have those options ready, I will certainly bring those to the, to the council. They're expecting to have a meeting on the 21st of September and I won't be in the office that day, but I might talk with Nancy and see if she's available or somebody, one of the, one of the other folks because I think her perspective would be really valuable, too, if we're looking at creating a special tax district. I also had a conversation with the folks from Manerville about special fire district, which is a, an issue that I know there hasn't been a huge desire to broach that, but it seems like the economies of scale would be such that if we're looking at it for ambulance, being a mile and a half from Manerville, it would make sense for us to look at it, especially when it came to capital purchasing. You know, and I talked to the mayor of Manerville and I said, you know, we're buying a new $650,000, $700,000 fire...
I said, you know, we're buying a new six-hundred-and-fifty, seven-hundred-thousand-dollar fire truck. You know, it doesn't make sense for both departments to necessarily have to replicate that. It doesn't mean the departments necessarily have to merge immediately, but there's certainly possibility because both departments don't even have the exact equipment, you know, when you're going to be replying to mutual aid anyways. So, um, you know, I'm not sure where that'll go. Uh, and it may mean some, some meetings with their, their, their department there and with their, their council. They're looking at some council, some significant council turnover. So, I'm not sure how fast they'll go, but I do think it's worth talking about because, you know, if we're looking at it from an ambulance perspective, Ellers was talking about how, you know, up in Cokey, they've got ambulance, fire, you know, it's, it's all one. And I don't know if that's the direction that we'd ever want to go, but it's something that we'll have to be taking a look at. So, just the recruiting alone is going to necessitate that the departments have to, you know, having enough people to actually serve in the fire, it's, it's a difficulty. So, um, okay, I think that's what I've got in my report. And then there's a couple of items I include. It's just information underneath. Uh, you've got the list of services that Compass is providing, our electric purchasing co-op. Um, you can see kind of how they scored that. The ones that are in, um, green are ones that they haven't seen any changes in. The ones in yellow are ones that are changing. Usually they're seeing more, uh, demand for them. So, um, read through that at your leisure. Let me know. They have a whole list of things they're doing and a lot of things they aren't doing. Um, they're interested to know if there are other things that the member cities would like them to be looking at. Um, so, some of the things that I brought up would be cooperative purchasing on different items. Uh, one issue we run into is that not all the cities have got the same kind of electrical system. Um, you know, the voltages aren't the same, but there are some cities that are the same. So, we're just having a, a lot of difficulty with supply chain concerns, you know, the, the transformers and things of that nature. Getting the pads for the, the residential subdivisions has been real problematic. Thankfully, we've been, we're ordering out, you know, we had stuff that was coming from last year that we've been able to put in there. But, um, take a look at that. Um, if you have any feedback on it, let me know. Uh, let's see, I think then I have that last item, uh, or do I have it under this one? No, I don't have it under this one. So, um, that's all I've got tonight.
Okay. Any questions for Tim? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, on the personnel, number one, job description update for the S R O, the school resource officer.
So, uh, the police chief's here and he can speak to these changes. There were some, uh, he has some recommended changes to the, uh, to the S R O job description. I think in order to make it a little bit more assessable and possibly, you know, you can speak to that, Josh, what your recommended changes are based off of.
I know a lot of the changes have to do with having K M N Zed now, eliminating Zed and making it, or eliminating K M and making it schools within the Safe Cast and, uh, along with, um, having central ref to have two officers up there, uh, changing the requirement of five years' experience. It's one of the big changes, too.
I think the other big one, and so not a lot of changes really, but, uh, the other one would just be that it delineates that during the, uh, when they're not acting as an S R O, they'd be acting as a patrol. So, that was something that was a debate point in our, our experience through this last year, so.
Yeah, and there's nothing in those changes that would be part of the, the negotiated contract that we're changing. So, that's, yep, that should be good. Okay. Any questions for Chief Hanson?
I was just curious about the pay grade drop to twelve.
That was actually already agreed in the last contract, so.
Yeah, we changed the, yeah.
That actually occurred, I think, right after this job description was posted, so.
Fair enough.
Anything else? Good. Okay. Entertainer motion to approve? It's moved. Thanks, Dwayne. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thanks, chief. Um, on to number two, regretfully, um, Amy Johnson's resignation. Um, so, she'll be staying through, her letter said to the end of September. She'll help with, uh, training anybody else that's coming in. So, I'd like to thank her for her time at the city and I'll entertain a motion to approve her resignation.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Dwayne. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Just one note on that. So, we will be, uh, making a review of that job description and posting, um, ASAP because, uh, we do have a, a limited timeframe. It's, it's a little problematic with Linda. She's going to be out of the office for the next six weeks, hopefully only six weeks. Um, but I think we'll, we'll, we'll certainly do the best we can to try and make sure that there are any issues there.
Okay, thank you. And the attorneys' report, we've got, uh, the closed session regarding, do you have the language on that?
So, it's a, a labor wage issue.